Okay, it's seven o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation filed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Ellen?
Here.
Green?
Here.
LaFour?
Here.
Mistravich?
Here.
Rindell?
Here.
Ricks?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Good to see everybody here tonight. Approval of the minutes for the quarterly roundtable meeting of October seventeenth. Motion be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion made in support. Any discussion? Being that all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We also have the minutes from the regular meeting on the same date, October seventeenth. Is there a motion for those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll support it.
Is there any discussion on the motion or the minutes? Being that all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Audience comments on any non-agenda items? If anybody, I think you're all on the agenda tonight. If there's anything else anybody would like to bring up, we ask that you come up here, state your name to the clerk for the record. We'll move on. Option of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes? Motion accept the agenda as presented would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
All, uh, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion made in support. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We'll move on to audience for consideration. We have four this evening. The first one is a presentation and approval of the city audit. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to receive a presentation from the city auditors, Plant Moran, on the fiscal year 2021-22 audit. The auditors are able to give an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that can be provided. And, um, the auditor's presentation to the city council will express that the city is maintaining a solid financial position. Uh, and two members of our audit team, Keith and Veronica, are here tonight to make the presentation. Keith?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be here with you today. Um, I'm sure you're accustomed to see Dave Harrington year after year. He had a conflicting meeting this evening, but he's stressing Veronica and I deliver some good news without messing things up, so we'll do our best. Fortunately, it is good news to report this evening. As the city manager reported, it's an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. Once again, it's a clean audit report, the highest level of assurance we can give to set of financial statements. And we're once again happy to deliver that to the city of Richmond. It's what you should expect and what we're accustomed to giving to the statements each year. Beyond that, we do have good financial results. As Veronica will go over in a minute here through the graphs, the general fund was able to add to its fund balance for the year, and the water and sewer funds have maintained good financial position as well. One item not included in the financial statements is the impact of Gatsby Statement Number Eighty-seven, which was the new accounting pronouncement related to leases. You might remember a year ago, we talked about the fact that it's uncertain what impact it was going to have on the statements for the city, but one thing was for certain, it was going to require some additional work. And I think both of those items held true. Angel had to do quite a bit of research on possible leases, pull out some old contracts, analyze them, run some calculations on what the impact would be if it were adopted. Ultimately, there was just one lease agreement related to money coming into the city from a telecommunications company related to a cell tower that would have fallen under Gatsby Statement Number Eighty-seven, but because it wasn't material, it wasn't required to be reflected in the financial statements. And so you won't see that in the financial statements today. The city will, however, continue to report the annual revenues as they come in each year. With that, I'll pass it over to Veronica to go over the financial highlights.
Thank you, Keith. I always forget to do this at first, and it's much shorter than normally who comes before me, so, perfect. So today I'm going to cover the highlights that are in the graph presentation that I passed out for you all. So if you want to flip to the first page here, um, the first page after the cover is covering the general fund revenues. Um, so a couple of things that I wanted to point out here. If you look, um, the column all the way to the left is 2018 revenue, and then you see the trend over the five years with the column all the way to the right representing this year's revenue. It does appear as if this year's revenue did decrease slightly in comparison to last year. The primary reason for that is because last year there was all of the CARES Act COVID-19 funding that was received. So the biggest category where you'll see the decrease is in the other revenue category. That's what that's related to. The two largest categories that make up general fund revenue, which are property taxes and state shared revenue, both of those categories did experience increases this year. The increase in property taxes is primarily because of the increasing property tax values. This is the seventh year in a row where property tax values have continued to increase, so that's great for the city as that's your biggest revenue driver in the general fund. The second biggest revenue source in the general fund is state shared revenue. And again, state shared revenue did experience an increase this year, so that increased about seventeen percent from last year. And a lot of that is related to the new 2020 census data that was received, so a lot of the state shared revenue percentages were updated, which resulted in that increase. So if you flip to the next slide, page two here, this slide represents the general fund expenditures. So you'll see the expenditures did increase about seven percent this year. A lot of that is from capital outlay that has been happening throughout the city as various capital projects have been occurring. And the biggest category, as is very common and has been the trend of the past few years, the biggest category that takes up general fund expenditures is public safety. So public safety represents about forty-seven percent of total general fund expenditures. And then if you flip to the third slide, this slide here really represents what fund balance is within the general fund. To reiterate Keith's point, you'll see the 2022 column, which is the second column to the right, um, all the way to the right. So you'll see general fund fund balance continued to increase over the past several years, and there was about three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars added to general fund fund balance this year. The other thing that really should be highlighted when we look at the general fund fund balance is that the most significant portion of that is unassigned, which means that you can really use that for any expenditures going forward. So we want to give credit to the city and to all of you and management for being able to continue to build up your fund balance. That puts you in a really great financial position and is really because of good budgeting, paying attention to your expenditures, and really just trying to make sure that you're focusing expenditures in areas that you should be to put yourselves in such a good position like this. Now, if you flip to the next page here, slide four, we're going to move on to the water and sewer funds. So there are two key trends in the water and sewer funds that we want to point out here. The first trend is looking at working capital, which is represented by the blue line in the graph. The working capital is showing what resources are available to fund your operations. The other trend we want to highlight is your operating income, and the operating income is highlighted by the red line, and your operating income is showing what you're bringing in and then all of your operating expenditures, so what's left over after that. Now, specific to the sewer fund, there was an operating loss within the sewer fund. However, that operating loss does include four hundred and twelve thousand dollars of depreciation, which is a non-cash item. So if you were to look at, um, really the cash flow from operations, you do have positive cash flow there, which is a great thing. And working capital in the sewer fund also decreased slightly this year, but again, working capital is in a really healthy position, so nothing to be concerned about there. Specific to the water fund, the water fund did have a positive operating income and an increase in working capital, so both really great things there. And really, the big takeaway for both the water and sewer fund are that they're in really strong financial position, which allows you to continue operating the water and sewer operations without having to take out a significant amount of debt, which is very unique. Any questions on any of the graphs, anything we covered, anything in the financial statements that were distributed?
Looks like you did a nice job again. Very easy to understand, like the long-term comparisons this year, like that too. Counsel, anything else?
No.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to receive and file the city of Richmond, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, financial report with supplemental information for Plant Moran. Support.
Motion made and supported. Is there any discussion? We'd like to thank, uh, thank Plant Moran again, doing such a great job. We also like to thank our treasurer, Angel, again, another great job. John, your staff, everybody that helped. You guys did a great job again. And of course, counsel. We had our many, many workshops again to watch the dollars this year, and it pays off when we hear things like this from you guys, so, thank you.
May I, if I could echo those comments, um, you know, the audit's certainly no fun undertaking for anyone at the city and in particular Angel, and we really appreciate the preparation that goes into it, her responsiveness throughout the two weeks that we're here, um, you know, firing off question after question to her, and then the lingering wrap-up questions that take place, really right up until the financial statements are issued. It's a pleasure to work with John and Angel each year, as well as the rest of the city staff. And so the team looks forward to this audit each year, and we're pleased to, once again, put another audit in the books with good results.
Great. Thank you. It's good to hear.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Are you going to stay for the rest of the meeting?
Can I leave?
Yeah. Item number two, consideration of approving the special event request, a Broadway Connection Debut Incorporated use of Trailhead Park. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a special event request from Broadway Connection Debut for a St. Patrick's Day Five-K Run Walk held on Saturday, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, in the Trailhead Park and McComb Orchard Trail. Jocelyn Manska is the main event coordinator, and this has been a multi-year event that they've used to raise money for their dance group. Again, the proposed Five-K, uh, run and walk would utilize the Trailhead Park and about one point five miles of McComb Orchard Trail. Um, the trail would remain open. We would just ask the runners to kind of be kind to those that are also out there using the trail. But other than that, it's, again, a recurring event that we've approved before, and Jocelyn is here to answer any questions you may have.
Jocelyn, would you like to add anything to that before we ask for a motion?
Um, no, I am, well, I would like to, you know, hope that the city will go ahead and pass this. It's always a good thing for the city. It brings in people, and it allows us to use businesses in the area to help support and get our mission to help our dancers dance.
Very good. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event application from Broadway Connection Debut for a St. Patrick's Day Five-K Run Walk and allow organizers to utilize the Trailhead Park and McComb Orchard Trail from six thirty a.m. until twelve p.m. on Saturday, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Do we have any questions, Ojocelyn, while she's up in front? You're getting off easy.
I know. I, this is the first year. I even made notes this year, just to make sure I was ready to answer anything.
What's the weather going to be like?
Oh, hopefully it'll be warmer than last year. We had lovely sun, but the temperature, we found out what happens when bananas freeze, because it was so cold.
Well, hopefully you have better weather this year. Any audience participation on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item number three, consideration of special event, Richmond Area Chamber of Commerce Holiday Event. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to consider a special event request from, for the First Annual Chamber of Commerce Festival of Trees to be held on Friday, December second, two thousand twenty-two, from seven p.m. to nine p.m. And Saturday, December third, two thousand twenty-two, from three p.m. to five p.m., and then again from five thirty p.m. to nine thirty p.m. This request will allow for the setup of trees on Wednesday, November thirtieth, and allow for the decoration of the trees on Thursday, December second. An invitation-only premiere night will be held on Friday, and then the festival will be open to the public on Saturday, including, I believe, a tie-in with some children's holiday bags decorated. So with that, I'll turn it over. Uh, the executive director of the chamber, Susan Eisen, is here to answer any questions. Susan, would you like to add to that?
Um, thank you for having me. I don't know what questions. I know John gave you maybe a summary sheet that you have in front of you. This event came out of my head like a lot of things do in our own household, but this event is something that I think would be good for the city. It would be good for putting the North End and the South End together, working together. So I thought about having a festival of trees. Um, if, has anyone here ever been to the one in Port Huron or the one in Novi, or probably not? No? Yeah? It's a very, very nice family-oriented, um, thing to do. So we've tried to include, um, the businesses and the children. Um, if I can get some children, so far we have, um, St. Peter's Lutheran that's interested in the children's part of this. So I think it's probably easier for me to ask, um, answer your questions if you, and I know you must have, being that this is the first annual, hopefully the first annual, um, festival of trees. We'd like to use the odd, the, um, that is the main thing. If we could use the odd so that we could keep everything together, so that the tree lighting and everything comes right on down the street. People can walk in to the odd. We have plans of having luminaries, I don't mean electric, battery-operated, operated luminaries going to both the doors. Um, there's the two doors there. We have plans for, um, having, hopefully having, um, a couple of guys or a boy and a girl, however we want to do it, young people standing at the doors, opening the doors, those are very heavy doors, in top hats and tuxedos to welcome people in. The trees themselves will, the chamber would like to sell these trees. Our plan is to sell the trees that I already have purchased that are sitting in the chamber office. They're about five foot tall. Nobody wanted them to be any, um, larger than five foot. And I don't know why, but that's what we settled on, was five-foot trees. The businesses would purchase the trees for a hundred dollars. And that would include their advertising, the stand that it sits on, the tree itself, and the signage that would go on it, and also being listed in a program. If we have enough time left now to do this, this is the plan. So it's kind of cool. Um, I've gotten quite a few yeses already. We want a tree, we want a tree if we go ahead and do this. So I'm open for questions, um, whatever you need to ask me.
We need to have a motion first before counsel has a discussion. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the First Annual Chamber of Commerce Festival of Trees on Friday, December second, twenty twenty-two, from seven p.m. to nine p.m. And on Saturday, December third, twenty twenty-two, from three p.m. to five p.m., and again from six thirty p.m. until nine thirty p.m., with a pause during the Santa Parade and Tree Lighting Ceremony.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Discussion.
I also think it's a great idea, something to bring the community together and utilize the odd, and, um, it sounds like everything will be inside, all the trees.
All the trees will be inside. We also have, um, reefs that people can purchase for fifty dollars and decorate the reefs. I haven't quite figured out how we're going to hang those reefs, but, um, I'm thinking maybe the guy over here on my left might come up with some idea of hanging the reefs, right? Yeah, okay, so.
Thinking about it the whole time, right?
Yeah, so I'm kind of thinking, um, the reef, it, it's less expensive, of course, but there's a lot of beautiful reefs out there that people make and use their imagination. So we hope, um, like, maybe like the dentist's office might think about putting plastic teeth all over them and their, um, the tree. It doesn't sound pretty from here, but I'm just saying for the business itself, and tie those little samples of Colgate that they handle on the trees. We will, the point of it is that if you want, if they want to sell the tree, they can. You'll get raffle tickets coming in the door, and you'll drop the raffle tickets if you're interested in purchasing them. The public is interested in purchasing somebody's tree. That financial gain will be for the Chamber of Commerce because frankly, we need the money. So that's, um, we aren't, we are not going to charge people to come in. We did think we would do that. The Richmond Lions Club is a little bit short on canned foods this year because the choir isn't singing at the high school where they are every year, and everybody would bring a can of food. So this year, or this, for this, um, event, we'd like people just to bring cans of food. We'll have boxes ready, throw the food in. I've convinced Jeff White, who's also on this, on the board of directors for, um, for the chamber, to bring the smart buses and pick up all the, um, the, the food in the boxes because that, when he, if he takes them DMS, that's where the Lions put all the baskets together. So we decided, nah, we don't want to charge anybody. Um, if we don't have to, we just want everybody to come and have a good time and see what else we can do for the holiday season. Now, the children involvement, um, many years ago, I was at a, I had a friend from Kansas City, Missouri, that had a Hallmark store, and they had the evening of the bags. And the bags actually, the gentleman put them on their ceilings and let the bags hang down. The kids, the kids, excuse me, the children would decorate those bags, thus bringing, bringing the parents into the Hallmark stores, looking at the bags, oohing and aahing, and aahing about them. And, um, so we're hoping this is what happens. Like I said, St. Peter right now is on board. I have, um, contacted a gentleman from the Richmond schools. Um, we can only do, and also CNAs, we can only do like one or two grades because we, that's all we can handle. We'll give them the bags, the art teachers, um, whomever is ahead, we'll have them get them ready for us. I'll go pick up the bags and we'll put them on the bleachers. And we have little treats or something for the children, so, um, that's how the kids get involved. And maybe we'll do something different, but it seems like, um, the people that I talked to at the schools were very positive with this. So more questions? I know you've got to have questions for me.
No, this sounds like a great event. My only concern is the odds under construction right now. Is it going to be suitable for the public to go in?
We believe our timing, we will be there. Um, the mason should be wrapping up this week, and then Sheena should be in shortly to follow to put the roof back on. So, uh, the painting is done, other than that back wall, um, so, uh, we would be there and, uh, to have an event like this. It could be open, yes.
If everything goes right.
Correct, yes.
Weather is going to play a big part of that, and weather's going to help.
Yes, it is.
My concern is the same thing. We, we've only got three weeks, uh, to get this, uh, building in shape. We haven't even had a grand opening yet. We haven't even had a dry run in the building. We had problems that have the administrations had to address, including the heat, uh, as of late. So, um, great idea, don't get me wrong, but I don't know if that's the right venue for you because of the problems, um, that we could encounter. Not only, again, as Rob has stated, we still have to replace an entire roof on that whole back end that got damaged by the storm, uh, let alone the masonry that the city manager said should be done by the end of the week. Everything has to fall just right in this next three weeks to be ready for you. Besides, the dust that's all blown into the auditorium now is a mess. Um, so the building itself isn't quite ready, I don't think. That is going, that's my main concern, is the building itself. I don't want you going out and selling this, and then all of a sudden, the building's not available.
I understand that. That's why I'm standing here.
Yeah.
I, I understand it. Um, maybe in my mind, I knew I had to come before the council for approval, okay? And I have to be really honest, that held us up a couple of weeks, but it's the right thing to do, and God bless all of you for being here. Maybe, maybe it's a good thing to try for next year.
Yeah, that's why we're doing, that's why we bought the odd, to have events like that.
Maybe that would be the thought process. Believe me, I've thought about this a lot, too. I've spent some wide awake nights worrying about everything, and, um, um, maybe we need more time. But, um, hopefully we can keep the chamber going. That's where I'm at, and, and, and I think we will, we, we will.
Depending, you know, I mean, counsel has to vote on this, but let's say that the odds just not, we're worried about the odd being ready since it's not open, uh, as of today, it's still not, um, used to have, the ball equipment used to clear out the front of their entire building.
I remember for chili cook-offs and for, and Dick Hoover used to clean his front out for, uh, the Taste of Richmond. Yeah, Dick always did that.
Is that a possibility of still?
I have a possibility of another venue, yes.
Okay, okay.
I'm not free to say that right now, but I do have a possibility of another venue. Do I think it would be as nice as, um, the odd? No. Um, but it certainly is a possibility that we can do. When I say no, um, it's because the odd has the ambiance of what we need. It's not, you know, it's there, it's always had that ambiance. So that's why we chose that, you know, to begin with. So, and, and not to take away from any other venue, because I'm blessed to hear somebody else say, hey, maybe I can help you out, maybe. So, but, you know, maybe next year is a better time. Um, I, I, we have a committee meeting at ten thirty tomorrow morning. You saw, you saw my members here, right? They all showed up here to help me, so, um, so I certainly understand it all. It isn't that I don't.
We'd love to have you, I believe.
Just a comment, because this is a brilliant idea. I remember, I have gone to an event like this where, well, I sang in a choir, like as a backdrop, while people were, they bid on trees. Yep. And they would bid lots of money on these trees, because, and then they would just take the trees home, and they, people would spend thousands of dollars on these trees as a fundraiser for, I don't even remember what it was. So it's a great idea. It fits perfect with our event. I am genuinely concerned, though, about the odd being ready, because have we even had a cleaning crew go through it after we refinish the floors?
No, no.
Yeah, so there's.
Well, I mean, step back. Prior to the block work being done, we did have a cleaning crew go through and clean in there and, and the wreck stuff has. What the mayor has referred to is they were cutting block for the masonry work, and it was sucking.
referred to as they were cutting block for the masonry work and it was sucking, the, the way the wind was blowing, it, it literally sucked all the dust in that they were cutting and coated everything since we walked through with a fine layer of dust that is over everything. So.
Saturday.
Yeah.
With the high winds.
It, it's a crapshoot trying to see, would we be ready by then? Yeah.
I just hate to promise it to the chamber and then come in and ask and say, it's not ready and they doing all this planning.
It's a.
Because it, it sounds like incredible event.
Yes.
It fits right in with the weekend too and.
Yes. And I, I love that you want to have it at the odd because this is exactly what, you know, the intention of having this as a city community center. It's unfortunate that, you know, there's been some hiccups trying to get everything open, but I love the idea.
Thank you, Emily. And, and you know, John, John meant the team, as I call it, the team and I and Margot at the odd and we did go through it. And John did explain, he certainly explained everything to me. And having been around someone that's done a lot of different buildings and doing things, I understand it. And, and I appreciated John's time and Margot's time. And, and this doesn't surprise me. And you, and you have to do what you have to do. And actually, in my heart, I feel that maybe we now need more time just for the businesses as well. And if, if the team wants to go through with this, we will consider a different venue. But this, the odd's going to be in my heart if it's at a different venue. But not to say that we won't do it next year. So I was looking forward to the premiere night because that's the adult one and that was actually semi-formal for that. And we did have music. We've got music. Actually, Joe Augusta is trying to work things around and I went to Ottenbacher's studio and they were trying to come up with, you know, bands to help. And so everybody has really jumped on board. So with me saying that, I feel we will not have any problems if we do this next year, if we table it or whatever you want to do.
Change your dates now.
Yes.
It's going to be a hot place.
Yeah.
But.
And I will, and I will. I would take this back to my committee tomorrow. So, yeah.
Anything else, council? Bob, you're an audience. Have anything else you'd like to add to this?
So the idea of hearing is that you don't feel it's going to be ready?
The building won't be ready.
It won't for sure.
No, we don't know that. The problem that I think some of us are having is we can't guarantee that it'll be ready.
Right.
If you go by a calendar and you have good weather, it could be ready if we get everything cleaned up after the co, two different contractors come in. The question is, are they going to be in on a timely basis? Are they going to finish it up? And then are we going to have time, especially with Thanksgiving in there? Our parking director, I looked at it, she only has 12 working days. She works four days a week. She has 12 working days between now and when you want to get the odd. So if, you know, it just, it's, if everything was perfect with our contractors, it could happen, as the city manager started off with.
So if it could happen, or if you did need it done, could she have permission to do it? How much time do you need to put it together and say, it's going to be at the odd?
Right now, I need every day I can get from tomorrow right, right on. You know, I'm behind.
Unfortunately, that's what we realized. We had a.
Sure.
Parade meeting and tree lighting meeting this morning.
Yeah, it's coming on us.
Just how short we are to get like Christmas cash out to the businesses. We're already probably a week behind in doing that. It's just kind of snuck up with the way Halloween fell on Monday and.
Yeah, it's kind of a different year or something, but at least we're all together.
It's early.
Two years of not being together, not being able to do things, so.
As, as we mentioned, the building's not in the same shape today that it was when we walked through it.
Okay. And you explained that it was probably going to happen. So, yeah. So, and it's all right if it's, if, you know, if, I, I have a feeling that the team tomorrow, wonderful committee that I have, they're actually all bankers except one. We, we got the community bank people are really involved, all the managers. So I, I really believe in my heart we're running out of time.
There's nothing you can do about that?
Nope, no.
Well, there's no such thing.
Yeah, I did. Absolutely.
It could have been a lot worse.
Yes, it could have. Yeah, we would have been ready.
Mm-hmm.
Got to not have been for the storm.
And it's hard because.
So if she wants to do it next year, then there's no problem to do it next year?
Put an application in and we go through the same thing.
Put the application in next week for next year.
Yes. I was going to say, January first, we'll have my application in for next year.
I personally like my little Snoopy tree with one.
Yep. It'll cost you a hundred dollars.
Well, and it's, it's hard to agree to it because as the city, this will be our first big event and I want to put our best foot forward when we invite the community into our building and not be not there. Does that make sense? Because.
Of course, Jamie. I understa, I totally understand where you're coming from. I, I just, in my own way, I wanted to know your feelings on something like this. If I were to put it together and continue with it, because I think it's important, it's an important event that we can add to with it. So you've given me the courage to keep going here. So.
Very good.
Okay.
And also to work with the city, Parks and Rec and council, to plan it all out, you know, to make sure we cover all of our bases and, you know, we can all work together. We'd love to help.
Okay. Love to have you on board.
Yeah. Hopefully our building will be ready to go.
Okay.
No more storms.
Hmm.
Okay. Anything else, council? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, against, say nay, nay. Motion does not pass.
Just kidding.
That was the hardest vote ever.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely not a vote. So we're supporting your event. It's just, yeah, I think, I think by doing it next year, I think you, seeing the support that I think you're getting from council, I think it'll be the event that you have envisioned in your mind. So.
How many trees do, how many true trees are you going to sell?
Um, well, right now, I probably have twenty-five sold.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
I think it's, it can go higher.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and the premiere was, I mean, really good thing for a lot of people, just to be able to get out, look at the trees, have good music. And the team wanted some wine and beer there, which I know, I know that if we give it away, it's okay, but if we need to have a temporary license from Hamlin or someplace like that.
I think you have to take that through the LCC.
Yes.
Yeah, it's got to go through the LCC. And that's a 10-day minimum, is what they're saying. So.
That odd is going to be a great asset to the city.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. We're looking forward to it. Yeah, yeah. And any other events that you come up with the rest of the year, come and see us. Because that's what it's there for. It's for the community.
Which I would do someday.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Take care. Item number four is consideration of purchasing radar signs. Mr. City Manager?
City council is scheduled to consider approving the purchase of four TC-400 battery-powered radar signs from a company called Radar Sign. Since the purchase of our current radar trailer, the city council has asked administration to look into some more permanent locations for radar signs throughout the community. Based on our investigation into some information that councilors brought back from conferences and as well as information from some of our neighboring communities, we've settled on their recommendation with Radar Sign due to the flexibility of their brackets, being able to go right onto existing speed limit signs, the battery life that one of our neighboring communities has gotten with the same signs used down in New Baltimore. And so with that, the city administration is recommending waiving the purchasing ordinance requirement and approving the quote from Radar Sign for four TC-400 battery-powered radar signs. And that will also include extra brackets and batteries, so that we'll have four, four locations and then be able to quickly move them to four other locations.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to waive the purchasing ordinance requirements under section 64-53D and authorize the city manager to sign the quote from Radar Sign for four TC-400 battery-powered radar signs, brackets and batteries in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred eighty dol, eight, eighty, eighty dollars. Oh, my goodness. Support.
Most of the made and supported. Any discussion on this?
I don't know what's.
We've had a ton of discussion on this over the last few years about the effect of the, the one that we had. And I can attest to that, living on Monroe Street, especially at, in the morning and at night, school traffic. And then when we had the horrible accident over the weekend at 32, they used Monroe Street as a bypass. And I was, I was shocked that we haven't had our own accidents in that area. When the sign that we have on the trailer was put on my street a couple of weeks ago, it was obvious that they were watching that because nobody ever in the entire time that I was sitting in my lacy boy chair looking out the window, did I see a vehicle that looked like it was speeding. Since they took that sign down, I have seen it continuously again. It just, people are, drivers are just insensitive and crazed the way they drive. If they can't do their, straight down the road or whatever, it seems like they become angry and they, they fly through our neighborhood. Again, I see it at those critical times. So I know that these radars work. Absolutely, they work. The last time it was put in front of my place, a year or so ago, it did the same thing. It slowed that traffic right down. And I, I think these are going to be fantastic for us.
It's raining though.
I really do. And well worth the money, especially if it slows that traffic down and, and makes it much easier to get around the community, whether it's walking or bicycling or whatever. Slows the traffic down. It's got to, it's got to create a safer community. For fifteen thousand dollars, can't have money better spent, far as I'm concerned. Other comments? Questions? Anything? I, I'm sorry, I didn't see where there, was there a date or a time?
Uh, it was in, I think, an original email that I may not have put in the packet. Four weeks.
Four weeks, okay. Okay. Anything else, council? There is no audience. Roll call votes.
Allen?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
LaFleur?
Yes.
Mistravich?
Yes.
Reindell?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Motion does pass. Okay, moving on. Nissla Nissband from the city manager?
I just want to thank everyone involved in the No Tricks Only Treats Halloween event. A great event up there at the fire hall. Again, I appreciate their willingness to let us use their facility and all the other departments that came out to help, rec, cable, I think library, and PD and, and obviously the RVFD as well. Also, just good luck to the clerk and her staff tomorrow. You know, there's been a lot of effort going into this election and she's done a great job.
Thank you.
And with that, the only other thing, letters will be going out to the people that have worked on Christmas decorations before. We'll be doing, putting up the Christmas decorations the Sunday after Thanksgiving. And I'm looking at like probably that Saturday, the 19th for checking all the bulbs and stuff where we.
Got a time?
Uh, I don't, it'll be, I'm going to send out a letter tomorrow to all the volunteers. So I'll, I, I think we normally start at around nine.
Yeah.
Usually nine in the morning and on that Saturday for the bulb check. But I ordered a bunch of replacement bulbs and candle bulbs and all that so that we have them. And so I'd like to do it that weekend.
Very good. Moving on, council comments? Mike?
Mike.
I'm going to start over here.
Dennis?
Nothing tonight.
Mike?
Um, just a, one thing. Too, we saw we had Plant Moran come in today and as usual, give a, give the city accolades for how we watch our money and do everything too. So I guess I would just like to thank the administration for that and thank the council as well. We watch our dollars. Anything that we purchase in the city or any projects that happen are well thought out. Starting to see some comments, you know, on social media, of course, people, as soon as we do something in the park or like in, you know, instead of buying some radar signs that are for safety and, and in the city, you know, it always takes one person just to kind of start making some rumblings about it and questioning, you know, dollars. And of course, if anybody's interested, they can always come to the city, see what the budget is. Everything that we purchase, unless it's an emergency, is always done well thought out and for a budget. So I'd encourage citizens to come in and take a look at the budget. Or if they're interested, meet the city manager or talk to us directly and we'll be happy to share that. So I'd encourage people to come. So I just want to, again, thank the administration, thank the council for looking at everything and, and we just don't spend money to spend it. We make sure it's in the budget. We saw today that our general fund, fund balance is in great shape. So if anything came up, we could be covered. So just want to kind of, I guess, have a public service announcement to encourage people to.
I agree with you. Jamie?
I just want to echo Mike's comments as well. You know, when we go to MML or other, talk to other communities, we are really financially poised much better than anybody across the state. So I appreciate the administration and the council for working hard on being very fiscally responsible with the money that is entrusted to us from the residents. And I'd like to thank Angel and John specifically for, for just putting that together and a warning to Plant Moran not to steal our treasure.
Yes.
And then I just also want to thank the clerk. She's been doing, she baptism by fire. Thank you so much for taking care of the residents. I've hear great things on returning their ballots and just thank you for taking this job so seriously. And we really appreciate the integrity that you have brought to the city here. And we had it before, but I just thank you for carrying that on.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Jamie.
I concur with everything that Jamie just said.
Very good.
I have nothing. Good luck tomorrow, Jamie.
Yeah. Good luck, Jamie. I concur. I've got announcements and we're going to start charging for these because I have four of them, all from the same place.
Wow.
Uh, the Lois Wagner Memorial Library is having a mitten tree collection from November 1st through December 12th. Any questions? 727-2665. There is going to be an evening with author Keith Gave. He's the author of The Russian Five and Vlad the Impaler. I've heard of that before.
The hockey people.
That's what it is, hockey. Wednesday, November 16th at 6:30 PM at the library. Oh, yes. Join us for a presentation by local author Keith Gave in a question and answer session about his time as a sports writer covering hockey for the Detroit Free Press and his newest books, as I just stated, and also a book, A Miracle of Their Own. This is going to be great for hockey fans. And again, 727-2665, and that's by reservation. Give them a call. The 27th Annual Christmas Cookie Sale at the library, it's a fundraiser, will be held on Friday, December 9th from 12 to 5. If you'd like to have some cookies, they'd like to have some cookies donated and you could drop those off on Thursday, December 8th from 9 to 5. The location's going to be in the library, of course, in the meeting room, which is all the way to the back if you come through the front door. And that is, all profits will go to the library and that is sponsored by the Friends of the Library. Library, again, is a Christmas puzzle competition, Saturday, December 10th. It's a 10 a.m. check-in. It's five dollars per team and teams consist of two to four contestants to put in a 500-piece puzzle. Now, that takes like two weeks at my house. It's amazing how these people can put these puzzles together, it's just amazing. Again, if you have any questions, 727-2665. That's the library. On our calendar today is the 7th. Of course, our election is tomorrow, as stated. It opens up at 7:00 AM and runs till 8:00 PM. The Cable Commission meeting that was slated for tomorrow has been moved to the 9th on Wednesday at 7 o'clock right here at City Hall. Planning Commission will be meeting on the 10th, Thursday at 7 o'clock here at City Hall. And the 11th is Veterans Day and we are closed.
Closed, yes.
For the first time ever, the city of Richmond will be closed. Does that include the library?
Library, DPW and City Hall.
So the entire city itself is closed on the 11th. And we again, thank all those veterans in our community for their sacrifices over the years. We have a library board meeting on the 14th at 5:30 at the library. We have an EDC meeting on the 17th at 7 o'clock right here at City Hall. And two weeks from tonight will be our next regular city council meeting on the 21st at 7 o'clock. And just for note, the city will be closed on Thanksgiving Day and also on Friday, the 25th. We will be closed. Was there anything else that we had to add to the?
I apologize, there is one additional item. I just want to remind people, it was out on Facebook in the newsflash, but we did through our COVID funding, purchased another Dropbox for payments. This one has been placed in the circle, the little circle drive around out front so that, on the driver's side, so you don't have to get out of your car, you can just pull around the circle and pull up to the Dropbox and put your payments in that right from your car without having to get out and walk up to the door, so.
Very nice.
Look for that, it's, we, we've put it out in the public, it'll also be in our next newsletter, but.
Nice addition, John. Nice job. Okay, is there any other business for the city council this evening? If not?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion made in support, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us.